So next up is our action items. And I believe Ms. Bowlen is going to make a motion. We want to bring 5.4, which is regarding policy 1050, to the beginning, so that you guys don't have to all sit around and sit in the meeting.
So I'd like to propose a motion to move 5.4 up to 5.4.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye, aye. Thank you. Yeah, so Mrs. Bowlen is going to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. And the motion is to request to put in abeyance until policy 1050, until such time as legal can review it with the policy subcommittee.
Second. Okay, second. So policy 1050, I want to give everybody a little bit of background on it. Back in the fall, this was passed by a four to three vote. During the discussion, people on the school committee asked, has this been reviewed by our legal department or by our attorney, Billy Conley? Who is here, by the way? Bill, if you want to wave to show everyone knows who you are.
I am he.
Um, I am he. And the answer was no, which is highly unusual. I was on the sub-policy subcommittee. We had, you know, before Billy was here, we had Neil Galvin. He sat in on our meetings a lot. Billy sat in on our meetings. If our attorney wasn't there and we had questions or policies being changed, they would review it. So we asked, has that been done? The answer was no. So it did pass by a four to three vote. And I believe it was even Dr. Flowers who said after it passed, we'd always send it back after it passes for review. If there's a problem, we'll bring it back. It's exactly what we did. We sent the policy to our legal in probably December. About a month later, I got it back. It was after our last meeting. So as the chair, I get it back. There's some issues with it. I brought it back to the meeting tonight to discuss in an open meeting. So discuss what the problems are, what the issues are. Again, it's highly unusual. I mean, if we would have a policy about planting trees at Rogers High School, it would be reviewed by our attorney. It was not. So again, that's what I did. I brought it back. And let me read to his conclusion. So I don't think a lot of people here have read the actual memo. It's 15 pages long, but it's pretty extensive. So I'm just going to read to the conclusion, which is one paragraph. "The policy 1050 is various policies contained in one policy. It inevitably relates to, without referencing or aligning itself, to various pre-existing Newport public school policies. Each requirement or mandate proposed by policy 1050 does not relate to existing NPS policy and should be separated and considered individually as possible amendments to those pre-existing Newport public school policies. Prudence suggests that the policy placed in abeyance while the committee engages in this process. Consequently, due consideration excuse me, consequently, due consideration can be given to all amendments as it relates to, along other things, compliance with applicable federal and state law and regulations. Additionally, due consideration can be given to the costing capacity of the Newport public schools to comply with each requirement or mandate proposed by policy 1050." So basically, if this motion passes tonight, this policy will be held in abeyance. It will go back to the policy subcommittee, which is chaired by Ms. Winslow. Mrs. Cullen is on the committee. Dr. Flowers is on the committee. I believe Dr. Flowers is the alternate. And there's also members of the community that are on that committee. So they'll go over it. They will review it. They will work with Mr. Conley. And they will come up with another policy or to change this policy or adjust this policy to comply with Mr. Conley's issues that he came up with in the memo. Then it comes back to us. And we'll, again, have an open meeting. We'll discuss it. And we'll have the vote whether to approve it or to deny it or send it back. But one of the most important things that I don't think anybody's really thought about is I look around this room. Everybody in this room is here. My guess is because of this policy. So you're all passionate about it. When this goes back to the policy subcommittee, it is an open meeting, just like this. Everyone in this room can go to that meeting and have input. So maybe this is a positive thing. If there's issues in here you don't like, every single person who's here can sit down at the table. It's upstairs in the library and have input to this policy. And Mr. Conley will be there or he'll at least be in a situation to review it. And then that policy comes back to us again and we vote on it. So that's how the process worked. It's not the basis of the policy as much as the process really wasn't followed as we have in the past. And it was never reviewed. When it was finally reviewed, we had issues. And, you know, as a chair, if I get a 15-page memo saying, look, there's issues with this. We need to fix this. If I just say, well, no, we're not even going to talk about it, I'm not doing my job. So that's what I'd like to say. I know everybody else on this committee has issues. And Dr. Flowers is the first one that had a hand up. So I will turn over to Dr. Flowers. What is that, Mr. Chair? Well said. Thank you.
I find it interesting that a policy has brought out such a big crowd, which is good. And hearing the chairman mention that he is looking for it to be held in abeyance. The item on the agenda is to rescind. And that, I'm pretty sure, is what has upset many, many people. Because rescind would be to pull it back.
That's right.
To remove. And that is not how this happens. I've been on the policy committee most of the time I've been on the school committee. And when to call the policy manual, a living document, is an understatement. We're constantly reviewing, sending things back to HR for student ones, for all the teachers, for everyone in the system, and input from representatives of the public who serve on the policy subcommittee. I'm glad that Mr. Dream clarified the reason why it's on the agenda. Because my reaction was, and I've shared this with a few people, that I hope this is not a knee-jerk reaction to the noise, and I'm not speaking about political parties either, but the noise that's coming out of the Oval Office in Washington, D.C. Because so many things are being pulled back. And I think a lot of people are afraid if we use those words, diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we're being un-American or something of that sort. I hope that is not what anyone here would ever feel. If we were listening, and I know everyone was, listening to the presentations about the rating of the different schools and you see everything that's going on in our school system trying to address the needs of our very diverse population, diverse in many, many different ways, and to include everyone in our decision-making, and also to provide equity, being the same equality, equitable opportunities for everyone. That's what this is about. Admittedly, this policy is verbose, to say the least. I always feel that some of these could be simplified. But that's the way legal things are. Our attorney has provided considerable input about this. I think I'm being generous. I'd say considerable, because that's his expertise also. My concern is that we forget why we have this kind of a policy. It's the beginning. It can be edited. It can be, I hate to use that expression, wordsmith, but any of a number of things. But if we say, if we really mean what we say, one Newport, if we really mean all our students as the stated in the mission statement that's read at every one of our meetings, for heaven's sakes, we're celebrating Black History Month.
That's right.
We have Hispanic Heritage Month in another part of the year and everything else, all the different cultures we have here. I certainly hope that the people who were genuinely concerned to reach out to us and say, don't get rid of this. Because to remove, and that's what rescind would mean, to remove that policy that will protect what we're trying to do and what we want our young people to be exposed to, we have to keep it there and work on it. All that accountability data that we saw about talks about it. That we want to provide equity, that is raising the bar for all our students and for ourselves too, and the means by which everyone can reach the heights at which every one of our students is capable. So I, for one, will not say to rescind or even in abeyance. I say, send it back to policy committee. It'll take a while, but there will be progress.
Mrs. Bowlen.
Well, I learned one thing. Words matter. And I'm really pleased to see so many people react to that one word, rescind. So thank you for being here. I hope that we get to this sort of outpouring of care and concern when we're talking about improving our teaching and learning as well. So I'm new to the school committee and I haven't been put on the policy committee. And the first thing I'm going to ask the policy committee to consider doing is creating a policy that delineates the process of writing a policy. Because right now, it's very murky and we're suffering the consequences of it not going through the proper steps, one of which was legal. The other thing that I'd like to do eventually with this, once we get the wording correctly, that is more clear and data-driven and actionable, I'd like to start a subcommittee. I did some research. In North Kingstown, just across the bridge, has a really good DEI subcommittee. And I think that because, obviously, this means a lot to so many people in our community, I think that would be a committee well-served. So those two things. Steps on how to write a policy so we're not in this mess again. And secondly, a subcommittee that can alleviate some of the concerns and we can work on it as an ongoing process. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Winslow.
I'm going to look to Billy right now. We didn't get to have a pre-meeting tonight. So I'd like to make a motion to substitute the original motion. We just used the wording that we already see on our agenda tonight. Request that we refer policy 1050 to the policy subcommittee to complete final legal review.
Yes.
Yes.
You have to vote. Point of order, you have to vote on the other policy for us. Or vote it up?
No.
Yes, you get an amendment to the policy.
Please.
Really?
Okay.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is a motion to hold in abeyance. This would be a motion, this would be to amend that motion to refer it to review to the, and I might not-
Refer policy 1050 to the policy subcommittee to complete a final legal review.
Thank you. So if that received a second, then you hold a vote on the motion to amend. And then if that passes, then you essentially hold a vote on the motion as amended.
That'll be the process, Mr. Chair. Is there a second? Second. Discussion.
I just want to say, you know, I was chair when this came through. And I had concerns back then about just making sure that, you know, we had done our, you know, due diligence in terms of checking it out with legal. And it did not happen. But definitely, I went back to the minutes to check today. And in those minutes, it says that Mrs. Bowright said, let's just pass it tonight and then send it to legal. So, and that's why that time I did not vote for it, because I wanted it to go through legal. That's all.
Mr. Mayor? Do you have a question? So why haven't the motion on the floor? Just forget about it, so I won?
No. And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah. So Ms. Winslow's motion is a motion to amend. So it received a second. So the committee will first vote on the motion to amend. If it passes, then you vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
I have a quick question about the amendment. It's being brought back to the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, to review the legal recommendations. I understand that. But I do think the policy needs to be reviewed to clarify, to make it more actionable. I think that there's a lot of wording there that is putting us in the wrong place. So I'm not sure how that works. Are you considering that as well as part of your amendment to study the actual content of the-
Well, I think that would all be done in the policy subcommittee.
Well, I just want to make sure, because I don't know if the chair is on the same page as I am.
I think it depends on what, and I can get into this. What the legal review really is.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I apologize. I was talking to the superintendent about the procedural matter. So maybe she was suggesting that I clarify that as well. So the original motion on the floor was to hold it in abeyance. And I know I'm paraphrasing. The amendment was essentially to now, as you've said a couple of times, to refer for review to finish to the subcommittee a complete legal review. And so that amends the main motion. It's been seconded. So a vote will be taken on the amendment. If it passes, then the committee will vote on the motion as amended. So I hope that helps clarify the process. Now, I apologize. I wanted to respond to your question.
I mean, Mrs. Cullen is wondering how much we get to rewrite. You know, I want to say, I think it will depend on what you say.
So-
As a true legal review. But as Dr. Flowers pointed out, policy is a living document. And you can go through any of our 250 policies that we offer to write, changes to any of them and bring them forward. But right now, I mean, right now, I think this policy has gone through an extensive process. And I can talk to that. But what we really need is the language at this point to determine whether it goes back to the school committee or not. That's as far as I'm going.
Yep.
Let me respond?
Yes.
Certainly. So I think as the chairman mentioned a few moments ago, when you review policy 1050 and student excellence and success, the amount of effort, hard work, and passion that went into this very comprehensive policy is unquestionable. And what, and if, not to oversimplify the analysis that I provided at the request of the chair of the committee, to describe is to say that, you know, a policy is a guidance to the committee, a guidance to the district on a course of action. That's what all our policies are. But for public schools, for this committee, that policy should be written around Title 16, the general laws, around the BEP, Basic Education Program, should be taken into account. It should be guided by the applicable federal regulations that impact those principles. And it should be looked at for consistency with existing policies. And those policies can be amended or adopted in a way, or this policy can be adopted in a way that essentially creates that consistency throughout all our policies. That's what a legal review would do. It would really, to be, certainly, take advantage of all this hard work that has been put into this and provide, and it would be a privilege to do it, to be, participate in that process and provide the guidance that takes that policy and puts it into guidance and a course of action that is consistent with all those principles. That's what, that's how I would see participating in this from, in terms of providing a legal review for the subcommittee.
Second.
Before we get, the idea of amending is fine, but that word rescind is still on that motion. And I would like to be assured that the intent of this particular policy is still will be honored while we are working at that. But then, in effect, in essence, we are going to be providing our students with-
The word rescind is not a motion.
From all of them.
Yeah, the word rescind is not a motion.
Because it's not going to be pulled out and disappear.
No, it's going to be, if it passes, it'll be in abeyance.
No. The motion on the floor is to just refer it to the policy subcommittee, not put it in abeyance.
So. Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr.-
Tony Conley, you gave us 15 pages.
Yes, sir.
Could you take a few minutes to give us your thoughts on this? The motion on the floor, yeah.
Yes, the motion is second. My thinking on the motion is that, you know, I spent most of my 50-some-odd years, through my dawny years, taking the advice of my attorney, city councilors, it takes the advice of the city solicitor. And that's where I'm coming from on this. So we do have a motion in a second. I'm going to call for a vote. Yep.
Yeah, Mr. Conley. So on the motion that we're considering, my sense is that if we pass this motion, that it will legally will still be in a place that's going to work for us. If we send it back to the committee, they redo it, and it comes back to us, at that point, we have, at that point, we're not, during that process, we're not any kind of legal jeopardy. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the other thing I'd like to say, I think that the idea of having a committee that actually brings this document to life is really where we should be. And we have a lot of policies. Those are words that get put to a book, they go on a shelf, and, you know, everybody walks away. That's what it is. But I think that the idea that Mrs. Cullen had about having a committee, like, and I read the document from North Kingstown, I think that's a great idea for us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say several things, actually. To Dr. Flowers' point and Mrs. Cullen, the subcommittee responsible for bringing this policy to life is the Newport School Committee. That is our job also, to enact, right? To hold the superintendent accountable. We are the policymaking body. We are, Beth, I'd like to finish, okay? And I just want to clarify things that were said earlier because there is no one process to write a policy. Every situation is different. Always has been. A legal review is not a requirement. It's a recommendation. Whether we want to change that or not, great. We can do that. But in 2023, we did have a legal review of this policy. And candidly, it was costly and frustrating and wasteful experience. It actually strained our relationship with Conley Law. So we moved forward using other district policies as our guide. It was reviewed by education professionals at Salve. It was reviewed by attuned education partners who helped craft our strategic plan, community partners and stakeholders, some of whom are lawyers. And in the meantime, you know, a dozen other policies have been reviewed, passed, written, you know, in these last two years. And no one asked, has this been reviewed by legal? So despite what- Despite what some people want to say now, that you just meant to rewrite instead of rescind, it's obvious to me, anyway, that the intention was not. Because we saw an effort to block passage on this technicality, basically, in November, a request for an opinion from the attorney that outlines all of the ways this policy won't work, which I was blindsided by as the chair of the policy subcommittee, and an explicitly worded motion to rescind on the agenda. So all last summer, I mentioned to the Newport School Committee at every meeting that we were working on this. And as stated previously, it is a public meeting. Anyone could have come and joined the process then. We went through two readings. It was passed. I'd say the policy subcommittee is open to considering amendments on the condition that Conley Law provide actual policy language, not just another opinion, and that the school committee members who have concerns engage in that process and express their concerns and provide substantive solutions. If you don't like something, what is the alternative to achieving that goal? Define it for us for consideration. I think it would be a great exercise for us to collaborate and find answers that benefit our students. Because again, remember, we are the policymaking body. The policy subcommittee there is to ensure that policies are periodically reviewed. They're written when required. But our lawyers are there to help when we have questions and need guidance. We just sat through yet another presentation of the Rycast scores that once again show us what we're doing and the nondiscrimination policies we have are not working. So it was hoped by me and many of the students and people who worked on this that an equity policy would define how to not discriminate, how to meet students' needs, and how to bring our families into the fold. And instead of being supported, this policy was targeted. So looking around at everyone who turned out tonight, I hope it sends a message to our school department about what matters most to our students, our families, and our community.
So I want this to work. And I believe in having a DEI. And I think the first problem with this policy as written and passed initially last fall is that it's called Philosophy, Student Excellence, and Success. That, to me, is fuzzy. That's a cloud over the whole concept of what we're trying to achieve here. We're trying to achieve an equitable policy that is data-driven, that is clear and concise, that is actionable. I read this, and I kept reading it, and I kept thinking, this sounds good, and I believe in what's in this document. But as a policy, how are we going to actually make it work for our students? It's just words right now. So the- No, not yet. The policy committee that I suggested would help make it workable for our students. It has to be constant exchange of information. This is a very complex, timely topic. So as far as the school committee being the better that the subcommittee on this policy, no, this needs a concentrated effort to really make it so that it can actually be implemented and it can be, and it can help our kids. I don't think this as written is that. Here's a suggestion. You know, if we were to vote on the amendment right now, then at least the public would know.
Yeah. Call for a vote after the amendment. All right. So what I'm going to do is call for a vote on this amendment. After we do that, I'm going to open it up to public comment.
Motion to refer policy 1050 to the subcommittee for a final legal review.
Yeah. The motion, yeah. And we have a second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Line two. So, Mrs. Nash? Who's up for our public comment?
Was that a motion to amend?
Amen. Yes.
Now?
But now we vote on-
Now you need, now you vote on the main motion as amended, which is-
I wanted to do public comment before we did that. Is that-
Oh, you mean, you voted to amend the motion, so the main motion is still pending?
The main motion is still pending.
We'll have to hear people's opinions before we get the final vote. Why can't we do that?
No, I just want, I did, I just wanted the committee to be clear that the main motion is still pending.
As amended, yes.
As amended. As amended.
Okay. So, Mrs. Nash, do we have anyone for public? Line two. So I would ask everyone who comes up to identify themselves with a name and address, and limit your speech, please, to, or your comments to three minutes.
Hola, good evening, everyone, my name is Daniel Cano, I reside on 50 East Bowery, Newport. I'm a Newport resident, and I've served as the Executive Director for our local LGDQ+ nonprofit, Newport Pride. And today, I'm here as a citizen and a member of this community to speak on Policy 1050. I understand that there might be intention to update this policy, and I appreciate the desire to ensure it best it can be. However, I want the school committee to fully understand the potential impact, especially with the current political climate of rescinding this policy, even temporarily. Policy 1050 represents years of work and community input, and is vital for protecting equitable education of our diverse student body. Rescinding it, even with the intention to revise it, can create fear, uncertainty, and a sense that our district is stepping backward on its commitment to inclusivity. This is why it's so important for the community to show up and demonstrate their support, as you can see. Not just for the, the policy itself, but for the values it represents. We need to send a clear message that Newport values student, every student, regardless of their background or identity. And I urge the school committee to consider the message they sent by rescinding this policy. Instead, work together to amend and improve it, ensuring that any changes strengthen, rather than weaken, its core principles of equity and its student success. You have a community behind you, so let's make use of the community, thank you.
And just for everybody's knowledge, there is no motion on the table to, to rescind or for an abeyance. The motion is simply to send it back to the Policy Committee.
I'm Patrick Wiegand, I live 41 Buscher Drive, Middletown, but I'm a teacher over at Rogers. Good evening, members of the Newport School Committee. I would like to speak in defense of Policy 1050, the Student Excellence and Success Policy. And explain why it should remain intact rather than be rescinded or fragmented. First, let's acknowledge that the criticism of Policy 1050 is too big, too broad, redundant, or contradictory. We see overlap between Policy 1000, our mission statement, Policy 1200, the vision, Policy 1200, 1300, our objectives, Policies 1400, 1410, 1420, are all ethical considerations for the school committee. Policies 1540, 1542, 1543, 1548, and 1550 collectively restate existing public policy and laws governing meetings. Policy 1710, parental involvement and 1720, school improvement, shared decision-making, both restate federal, state, and local regulations. The truth is, many of our district policies span multiple pages and address interconnected themes. For example, Policy 1710, parental involvement, is also quite extensive. Weaving federal Title I requirements together with local outreach efforts, English language learning compliance, strategies for parent engagement, more, all in one place. Length alone should not disqualify a policy, especially when its scope and the complexity of the issues it addresses are best managed under a single cohesive framework. Second, Policy 1050 provides a unique and comprehensive outlook that integrates academic achievement, resource allocation, social emotional support, and restorative disciplinary measures. It ensures that every student is afforded the same opportunity for excellence regardless of background. If we break 1050 into smaller pieces, we risk scattering that single unified vision into separate silos. In practical terms, parents and staff would end up searching through four or five separate documents just to understand how we handle college readiness, mental health, and student support all at once. Third, there's a built-in accountability mechanism in 1050 that requires annual reporting on student growth, discipline data, and other benchmarks of success. That transparent reporting keeps us honest about how well we are serving our students. Splitting into pieces might dilute this accountability and produce confusion about where certain metrics are reported or who is responsible for them. Finally, we must recognize that all policies in some way overlap or restate our district's principles, whether it's our mission statement, Policy 1000, or our student, our statement of philosophy, Policy 1200. So Policy 1050 is not uniquely guilty of overlap, redundancy, length, or how comprehensive it is. Yet we have kept each of the other policies precisely because they bring unique focus to the different facets of our work. While researching for this meeting, I found it difficult to track down and decode more than twenty different policies behind the district's website. This is difficult for parents, families, community members, and teachers to keep track of. Policy 1050 helps to eliminate some of that confusion by establishing a comprehensive framework in one place. This policy plays a critical role by bringing together our commitment to academic excellence and student support. The policy supports modern educational priorities and acts as a holistic and consistent reference point. This is not our only lengthy or multifaceted policy. Splitting this up risks disjointing a policy that is deliberately comprehensive, like our Policy 1710. Its value lies in integrating and updating curriculum, accountability, and student wellness. Policy 1050 reflects modern best practices in student success and continuous improvement. I urge the committee to vote against rescinding or breaking up Policy 1050. Let's keep it intact as our clear forward-thinking blueprint for ensuring that every Newport student has the support, resources, and opportunities they need to thrive. Thank you.
We do have a lot of people that want to speak tonight, so I will ask if you can please try and keep it to three minutes.
Hi, good morning. I'm Jennifer Wyfembach, I live at Freeborn Street in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. My son goes here under the NATEC program. First of all, I do want to ask, because as I heard you making a motion to get the word rescind out, it was to say possibly edit, move forward, but that's not been done. We're still hanging on the word rescind, and everybody's still freaking out a little bit about it. Which is understandable.
It's not even, it's not, it's not there anymore.
Still here, so until we get
There's no motion on the table?
If we get a vote, that's all I'm asking, is I'd like a vote. Okay. Now, I'm gonna quote someone here from a great movement. The guarantee of equal protection cannot mean something, one thing, when it applies to one group or one person. And it apply differently to a different group or a different person. That's just not how it works, or how it should work. Sadly, sometimes it is. I had a couple of questions mostly, this is not so much commentary. I do like the comment Ms. Flowers said that maybe this document should be fluid, growing, organic, because times change, kids change, the statistics of the population change. I wondered how is this going to affect kids who need extra assistance while it's in abeyance or review? Is there going to be a change, or are we gonna be staying with the same assistances? Are you shaking your head?
There is no motion on the floor to put it into abeyance. The motion is simply to send it back to the Policy Committee for a more, Mr. Conley.
All right, one other question I had is the teachers, the teachers have been noted to being volunteering extra time on their days off to help with math and, and whatnot. Why don't we reach out to the community for some of the parents who are in finance, or do English, or whatever? Because the teachers already don't get paid enough, they're under a lot of stress. I know I was a teacher. They shouldn't be asked to do a hundred more things on the very few brain cells they get to themselves when they're not trying to fight just to stay alive. So I think we should look more as a community, as you guys were talking earlier, into going out in the community and pulling in outside resources to assist our teachers, because they really need it. And if they're gonna be training in other languages, do they get paid more? Are they going to be doing this on school time, on their own time? Are they gonna be paid for this training? Or are they just supposed to do it out of the goodness of their heart? Okay, those are just some
That's time.
Yep, I bet it is. But you guys have a lovely afternoon.
Hi, my name is Haydn McDermott, on 92 Bliss Road. I'm a transgender Newport resident and a leader of a local Girl Scout troop, several scouts of which are students at the Newport Public Schools. I'm here to express my support for keeping Policy 1050, Student Excellence and Success as is. This policy supports an equitable approach to education and recognizes the importance of providing for the social and emotional health of all students and their families, especially those from historically marginalized communities. I have scouts from my troop that are queer, that are Latina, and that come from all economic backgrounds. When I see them after school and they already have a smile on their face is because they spent the day in a classroom where they were welcomed and supported as their full selves, where the curriculum reflected their cultures and communities, where bullying and microaggressions were not tolerated, and where teachers are able to recognize students' unique struggles and know how to best support them due to their training under this policy. This policy keeps a supportive and engaging learning environment possible, and it protects my kids' wellbeings. Thank you.
Good evening, Angela Lima, 203 Hillside Avenue, Newport. I just wanted to thank this committee for giving some thorough, thorough thought about this. I also want to commend Committee Member Stephanie Winslow, as I understand that this policy has been crafted and talked about for the last at least four years, is to my understanding. And so I just have a couple of questions that I want to ask. You know, in regards to the Subcommittee, so now there was a motion that just basically highlighted that it will not be rescinded, but like, sent to the Subcommittee. My next question is, how long will that be stuck in the Subcommittee for? Because I also recognize that's another way to kill certain movements and initiatives. And just recognizing in the eighteen-page recommendation letter from Conley Law, being able to review that, I mean, I agree with Committee Member Winslow in terms of asking, you know, if the problem is, is that there's not enough teeth or, or legal language, why can't we just get the legal language?
That's what we're doing.
I hope so, and I guess that brings me to my other question. Who's gonna be on this Subcommittee? Because if you need legal language, do you have, do you have the support groups within the Subcommittee to be able to support that?
Well, we have Attorney Conley.
Okay.
The members are Ms. Winslow, Mrs. Conley, Dr. Flowers. Molly Kapstein-Cody's on it. There's a, there's a, yeah, there's a variety of different members of the public on it as well.
There's eleven members altogether.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because if the goal is, again, we need legal language, then we need to make sure that we're not kicking this back to come back here again, to just like, have a safe discussion. So, thank you very much.
Again, I would, I would like to clarify. If the motion on this table fails, then Policy 1050 stays exactly the way it is. If it passes, it goes to the Policy Subcommittee. There is no motion on the floor to remove this policy. But there was.
Does it remain in the bag regardless?
Yes. That's where we stand right now. Yeah, there, there was, there is no longer. I just want to make sure everybody's, everybody understands. We have a vote, yeah. Anyone else on the
Hi, I'm Karen Conway, I am a parent. My daughter Alessandra Enright is a junior at Rogers, and my son graduated last year and is now at St. John's in New York City. And is well-prepared and doing very well. I know one of the questions, I'm just gonna, the folks around us are worried about timing, that this is then gonna go, how long? Because this is just a perfect way for it just to be stalled again. So that's my first question. And from my understanding too, the school committee does not send policy to lawyers, so I'm just concerned about why this one specifically, it sure seems political. The school committee members, even today, are asking why the schools are one-star and two-star school. Policy 1040 is where we need to start. 1050, sorry, dyslexia. 1050 is where we need to start. Because of 1050 assures for equitable access to resources in this educational setting. This accessibility is essential for fostering an environment where all students can strive regardless of their background. And every kid needs to have equal access to educational resources and opportunities. This equity is crucial for closing the achievement gap that you're complaining about. And this also promotes social mobility. And I implore you to pass this and stop making it a political football. You know, you, you have to actually follow through on the mission that you pledged to do, and pass it. Thank you.
Angela Lima, 203 Hillside Avenue. I actually think, Mr. Dring, because you brought it up as an issue for policy, I'm wondering if you are going to be a part of this Subcommittee. And I also understand and recognition that you are the chair, and that you are a representation of the leadership that was elected by your colleagues. And I actually think it would be a really nice thing to see you on the Subcommittee and making this a priority to make sure that we get the language right.
I, I was on the Subcommittee for years, and because really of time, I just don't have the time to do it. I'll, I'll show up at the meetings. The problem is, if I show up at the meetings, someone else can't be there, because then we'll have a quorum. So we can only have three people there at a time.
I think you should be there. That's just my personality. You are the chair, you are the leader, leadership here. Our community is asking for our leaders to be able to double down and actually be able to support. And if there are contentions that, that have to be hashed out, I couldn't think of a better person to be able to be on that Subcommittee.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Dr. Kimberly B. N., I'm a professor at Salve University, and I'm currently the president of the Newport Public Ed Foundation. When I heard that we were going to rescind this policy, I did a little research, and I wanted to read you a mission statement from the Rhode Island Department of Ed and the educators of color. Our mission, because this is a partnership between all of us, is to create a structural change to eliminate disparities and uphold our core values of anti-racism, equity, diversity, inclusion, empowerment, and the health and safety inclusion, empowerment, and the health and safety of all our students, our families, our educators, our staff. We will ensure through continuous reflection and improvement that systemic and instructional practices are equitable, they're student-centered, they're culturally responsive. We will provide clear guidance and be intentional and minimize barriers, ensuring equal representation at every level. And the development of students, the development of families, the development of community, sorry, and educators and administrative talents will be at our forefront. We are committed to identifying and developing solutions for equity gaps and for envision that Rhode Island educators and students, and particularly those of color and their families, have equal access to a safe, a supportive, an inclusive, and a culturally sensitive learning environment that provides rigorous and relevant education, real-world experiences, strengthening relationships and partnerships between all Rhode Island stakeholders." They're doing the work. It's long overdue. We know it, you know it too. The question is, are you with us? My question to you tonight is, why were you even considering to rescind this? Sorry, I only have three minutes. A local policy that is trying to ensure exactly what the Department of Ed is already committed to. Right up the street, you have a local university whose education department's mission is to train culturally responsive and anti-racist future educators. I say that we have a disconnect tonight, and so I go back to the original question. Are you with us? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bethany Peterson. I live here in Newport, Rhode Island. I'm a small business owner. I don't have children, but I hope to someday have children in this school district, so I care about the future of our school department. Yeah, I, I'm here to voice my opinion on frankly, exactly what everyone has said, the use of the word rescind. And beyond that, it sounds like there's been a really comprehensive four years put into this, and frankly, like what a waste of time to even send it back and try to amend it. If we've spent five years on it, why don't we start thinking about solutions for other things? It sounds like, you know, we're, we're talking a lot about this and that and whatever, and can we just be solution-focused? Can we like take what we have and work with it? I mean, everything that everyone has said makes sense to me, and I just, I, I also really don't appreciate continuing to be reminded that rescind has been taken off the agenda. We're here to voice our opinions, and we'll use our three minutes. I live here, I'm allowed to speak, and I think it's important that you hear us regardless of if that motion was changed. So when everyone stands up and claps for what we're saying, please don't shake your heads. You're here to represent us, okay? We live here, and we're voicing what we want done. So please take into consideration what we're saying. Your body's risen, but you're, you're the voice for all of us, okay? So listen to what your community is saying, because it sounds like we have some opinions that maybe you're not hearing. So, thank you, Stephanie Winslow. I really appreciate it.
Hello, I am Cassian Wyffenbach. Yeah, my name is Cassian Wyffenbach. I live on Freeport Street in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I am not someone at my school who has ever been known for public speaking or addressing any large groups. I'm a very private person, and I choose to keep my life that way. I'm a transgender student at Rogers High School, and your actions and your decision, even using the word rescind, you are threatening things at this school that have been in place for decades for a reason. This policy is putting into words things that these students, the students at my school, the students I go to class with every single day, the students I eat lunch with, the students I talk to, they all need this. This is carrying something that, this is protecting so much for so many people. And I think that your decision to use the word rescind in and of itself is just, you are not speaking for our community. I believe that what she said was very, very true. You are not representing our community at the moment, and I am very, very disappointed in this committee. It is not professional to say that, and it is not mature to say that. And I'm going to calip her, and I'm going to be immature. I'm sorry.
Hi, Amy Machado, 12 Berdick Avenue, Newport, Rhode Island. I just want to say to you, young man, you are mature. That was amazing, thank you. First, I would like to thank Stephanie Winslow for all the hard work that she put into this policy. It is not a mess, it is not fuzzy, it is what we need. So thank you so much for all of your work. Even just getting a charitable reading to why we're here tonight, I'm not really interested in doing that. The reason that we brought up the words rescind, abeyance, that was, they wanted, Jim Dream wanted to kill this policy, guys, let's be real. He can use the words abeyance, it's rescind, abeyance, that's a distinction without a difference. The reason that I believe he doesn't want this policy is because in 2024, he said, "I thought in 2024, honest to God, we've moved beyond institutional racism in this committee room when talking about our absentee rate." So let's be real. He wanted it to go back to the committee so he could kill it. Beth Collins doesn't like this policy because Stephanie Winslow wrote it. And Bobby Leary is against it because Bobby Leary is Bobby Leary. I sat in his chambers when he's mentioned, he's called our children criminals and thugs.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and you, yes, I'm surprised he didn't call me a communist. That's usually what he uses me back. I'm a socialist, yes, and a communist. I believe this policy must stay in effect, even if it goes back to the Committee for Amendments. I would like to understand from every person who's going to be voting, what's wrong, be specific, what don't you like about this policy? And I, I think that, Jim, you can go to policy meetings, they're public, you can't have more than four committee members in a room. And I was really disheartened that you opened up the meeting talking about your last time on the Committee when Stephanie wrote this policy, because you quit that policy Committee along with Bobby before you. You were not there when this policy was created. And please tell me that as a Committee, you are not spending money on an attorney when we talk about planting trees at Rogers High School. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Gracias a todos los padres que se tomaron el tiempo de estar esta noche en esta escuela. Estaban en la, estaban en la parte derecha de acá, no sé si alguno se dieron cuenta. We're talking about, we're talking about, I'm not good in papers. We're talking about equidad. We're talking about equity. Do you see equity over here? Because I don't see this policy in Spanish. And the person who are right there, the parents who are right there, speak Spanish. And they're not, they're not, you guys are talking about. So, my, my, I'm going to talk in Spanish. A todos los que hicieron acto de presencia esta noche, a los padres, empezaron con la política de anulación de la escuela, que si la vamos a cambiar, que si la vamos a modificar. Nadie sabe qué es lo que va a pasar. He estado leyendo la política y está bien. Solo creo que la tienen que hacer realidad y que sea algo de que si vaya a ser de mucho beneficio para los estudiantes y para que todos tengan la educación que ellos necesitan. El cambio de la, que proponen hacer a la política 1050 y cómo estos cambios pueden alcanzar las metas académicas para los estudiantes. Y el, y que haga, y que sea equidad, ya sea basado en la raza, en el idioma, y en la orientación sexual. Pienso que deberían de tomarse un poquito de tiempo más del que tiene a todos los miembros acá. Han trabajado muy duro para escribir esta política de las escuelas y espero de que, que se haga realidad y que no la mande a hacer ningún cambio porque está bien escrita. Y pasaron cuatro años para que esta política estuviera acá, y ahora dicen, no, pues hay que cambiarla, hay que expandarla, hay que ver que, no. Pónganse de acuerdo para que todo esto sea realidad. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Gomez. I'm the Executive Director of Connection Latina Newport. I'm not a resident of Newport, but I worked in the Newport Public Schools doing family outreach for many years, so I'm very familiar with this community. And let me just say, thank you.
Rebecca, we can't hear you.
I have crossed out half of my notes tonight, which I'm really happy to say. But good evening, School Committee members. Thank you for having us. Well, you're not having us, we all came, but we're glad. Because our input, we hope, is going to influence your decisions tonight because these fine people voted for many of you. So, I think that we all can agree that Policy 1050 states that all we want for all of our students is to have academic excellence and career readiness once they graduate. Correct? Correct. Our demographics show us, and I looked them up tonight, that 34.5% of our students are white, 38% of our students are Hispanic, 10% are black. The balance of our students are Native American, Pacific Islander, Asian, et cetera. We also have several students who are MLLs, multi-language learners, members of the LGBTQ community, students have IEPs and 504s. There is no majority here. Everybody's diverse, and everybody deserves equity because they all need what they need to achieve academic excellence and career readiness. The ways that are lined out in Policy 1050 is that by providing leadership accountability, high-quality instruction, students' mental health and social emotional well-being, family and community engagement, thank you again, and community commitments to continued improvement are the way to get there. No reason to change any of that, it's already there. So my question's theoretical, obviously. Who's going to ensure equity during the time that the policy is being re-debated? How long is it going to be in Subcommittee? That's already been brought up. Has anybody thought about the fact that DEI is under attack from the federal government? And our lawyer here has stated that it needs to be in compliance with federal and state law? What happens when that goes away and it's still sitting in Subcommittee? It goes in the shredder, and Newport no longer receives any money. If it remains policy now, it could potentially stack, right? So we need to protect our children. I appreciate that you have moved this from rescind, although I still have a problem with the word, and the fact that you all approved the fact that it was put on to be rescinded is a problem for me. And I think a problem for many of the people in this room. And the fact that there isn't a process for that is concerning. The fact that it wasn't looked at by a lawyer, if that is something that's part of the process of a policy coming to the School Committee, the fact that that didn't happen is another problem for me and should be a problem for all of us. So I thank you for your time tonight. I really hope that you will take our comments into account. I applaud you, Stephanie, and I applaud all of you.
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Cassidy. My address is an aisle Bradford Avenue here in Newport. I came out tonight specifically because of the word rescind in regard to this policy. And I came to urge you to reconsider the decision to rescind this policy considering that it includes language for diversity, equity, and inclusion. This policy was implemented at a critical moment when schools nationwide were addressing systemic inequities and striving to create a more inclusive, welcoming environment for all students. Rescinding or placing it in abeyance, thank you for the motion to refer to Committee. Rescinding it now would only reverse the important progress that you've made. It would also send a message that the needs of marginalized students are less important. Maintaining diversity, equity, and inclusion is vital to ensure that every student feels respected, supported, and empowered to succeed in a diverse learning community. I was actually going to request that rather than rescind the policy in its entirety, leaving the district with no language to protect the needs of our students, I urged you, I would urge you to consider sending it to your Subcommittee for Review, update the language, have the new language reviewed by the attorney, and then vote to replace the current policy with the updated language. However, my request would have been, had you chosen to rescind the language, would you explain to the community the part of the policy with which you disagree? Equity, diversity, or inclusion? Thank you.
Is that it? All right, well, we have a motion, and we have a second. So the motion would be with the amendment that Ms. Winslow made.
Oh, the motion as amended is to refer Policy, is to refer Policy 1050 to the Policy Subcommittee to complete the legal review.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Six to one.
Good afternoon. Quentin Foster on behalf of East Bay Community Action Program.
Quentin Foster on behalf of East Bay Community Action Program, Six Chaffee. Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Quentin Foster. I use H-They pronouns and I'm the director of transgender whole health care at East Bay Community Action Program. I want to thank you for all the work that you do to support and protect the students and families in Newport. I think as leaders, it's really important for us to recognize that what we do can never be perfect, but we're definitely on the right track. I can think of dozens of examples, but at top of mind is the district's swift response to immigration and customs officers being present in our city. I want to thank you for doing what was needed to make our students feel safe, even though it was imperfect. These days, I find myself overwhelmed by fear and anger. Every time I turn on the news or open up social media, I find another attack on our gender expansive community. Whether it be executive orders from the president, verbal attacks by politicians, or schools and hospitals complying in advance with unconstitutional and illegal policies, my community is facing incredible threats to our well-being and safety from all angles. As a professional, I can tell you that patients and clients and community members are terrified. My coworkers at EdCap and peers across various organizations have shared that they don't know what to do to support our community. And while there is no perfect answer and things change what feels like every three hours nowadays, I want to give a partial answer to that question. What you can do is protect our youth from discrimination. The Rhode Island State Constitution prohibits discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. RIDE has repeatedly provided guidance around the inclusion of transgender students across many domains of their school experience. Newport has a fairly comprehensive policy and has collaborated with our organization to fulfill your professional development requirements in understanding gender diversity. Please continue in that vein. Continue to include and consider and protect our transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse young people and their families. Research shows that LGBTQ youth are at immense risk, not only for hate crimes, but also for depression, substance misuse, and suicide. And that constantly seeing their identities debated in the media and in legislatures is damaging in ways that most can only imagine. Children's lives are on the line. They need your support, and we are here to support you in any way we can. So thank you so much.